All right. Good evening and welcome to the planning board. We will call it to order at 7:02 PM. If we would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't have a clearer copy for me to read off of, do you, Mr. Bot?
I'll bet it. We've got it on the big screen here.
Oh, I have it right here, thank you. Our first order of business is on the application of George A. McLaughlin, manager, for a preliminary subdivision rescission plan for property located at Montello Street and Green Parkway, multiple lots on assessor's map 20 and 22. All right.
Let's put it on screen first, for sure.
Mr. McLaughlin. What are we doing here this evening, Mr. McLaughlin?
This is Chairman Bob Rogers, GAF.
Sorry, Bob.
Engineering, that's okay.
I should have remembered.
Engineering, like the applicant, 44 development. So this is a 227-acre piece of land. We were before you several months ago with a Form A plan. This is a further progress towards their goal of consolidating this property into all one single lot, Lot A, 227 acres. What we are asking for is that the planning board approve a rescission of two prior subdivisions. If you look at Sheet 3, please, Tom. You'll see in very shaded Mead Road, AKA Park Avenue. There's another smaller Mead Road. Well, there was a subdivision that was approved and recorded in Book 38-192. There was another one that was recorded in Book 37, Page 608, I think. So, oh.
My apologies.
Yeah, oh, it's fine. Because the prior subdivisions or non-residential subdivisions, we had to file a preliminary. You know, we'll have to follow this up with a definitive. But what we're... The owner on advice of the lawyer, even though these subdivisions, since they weren't carried forward, they've expired. The approval is no longer valid. They would like an official vote to rescind from the planning board. It just makes it that much more clear that there is no validity to those prior subdivision approvals. And so tonight, it's just a preliminary. You know, these plans won't be recorded. You don't need to endorse them. It's set up so that we can very quickly change them to a definitive submission. And that's essentially it. Answer any questions that you have. There's absolutely no work associated with these plans. It's an exercise in creating a legal document that removes the two prior subdivision approvals.
Mm-hmm. Then what happens to Mead Road or Park Avenue?
Go away.
Correct. It's...
It just becomes a private driveway.
The layouts are on record. I think they were both, you know, different variations of a two-lot subdivision. But, you know, Sheet 2, you can see, is a straight existing conditions. You know, so there is some pavement on the site. There are some buildings. There's some wetlands. There's some cranberry bogs. But what we want to expunge, if you will, is those layouts, those two layouts of Mead Road. Certain easements will remain. The drainage easements that were associated with those subdivisions will also go away.
Please, Mr. Bot.
So let me, just to give you the board some background for this. So rescissions of subdivision plans are something that boards typically see. Unfortunately, they did see a lot more of them because there's a lot of really, really old subdivisions. There are just paper plans that probably should have gone away. So the board, the planning board, or the applicant on their motion can request rescission of a subdivision plan, which essentially wipes this lot clean. So the road right-ofways that were put into place previously, the lots that were created previously, they all go away. The one stipulation is, is that it can't affect any lots that have been sold or mortgaged in good faith. So what I have done with the folks at GAF is I have told them, when are you going to produce something that shows that you own all these parcels and not one is owned by somebody else or mortgaged in good faith? Because if you were a person who bought a lot in the corner and this was your access to it, and all of a sudden the planning board wiped away the subdivision, then you've lost your rights. So that's the one provision. This is not a discretionary application. As I pointed out in my memo, Massachusetts Journal says, "The planning board shall approve a subdivision." In this case, because they're wiping everything clean, there's not a whole lot of technical review. Andy will not be burning the midnight oil or the 8:00 PM oil at all on this. It's simply erasing the plan, what was on the plan. And as Rob pointed out, because it's a non-residential subdivision, they're required to go through two steps. Do the preliminary plan and then follow up with the definitive plan within seven months of the application. The one thing that I've asked for, that I think is our responsibility, is to make sure that we're not taking away somebody's rights on a piece of property they may own on that. So I've asked their team to give me, basically, a certification that the lots are all owned by them. None are mortgaged in good faith. And with that, they'd be able to move forward with a vote on the definitive plan. But at this point, it's a very procedural matter. And I have made a suggested motion in my memo as well in order to move the process along. Basically, just five minutes.
We have that certification?
No. So this is a preliminary plan. So that's something you're up to rescinding the plan. So my motion basically says, "Move into preliminary subdivision rescission plan from Montello Street, Green Parkway, dated December 1, 2022. Divise through 1216. Prove under condition, Mrs. Applicant confirms, that they own lots 20-2, 20-2-1, 20-14, and lots 23-2, 23-3-1, 22-3-A, 22-3-B, 22-4, 22-5-A, 22-10, 22-10-1, and 22-11, and that none are mortgaged in good faith." I read that motion, so no one else would have to say all those words.
Didn't we approve an A&R that combined all that stuff?
No, the two A&Rs that we did, that Rob had mentioned, are on the corners. So there's a lot on the corner, and that lot went into Plimpton. And there's a lot on the other corner that went into Middleborough. So with that A&R plan, they essentially carved off those parts of those parcels.
Right.
That were in those other towns.
Right.
So now those lot lines coincide with the town line. So what the owners owned in Middleborough is Middleborough's issue. What the owners owned in Plimpton is Plimpton's issue.
But I thought that made the whole thing Lot A.
No. It just got rid of the lot, the part of their property that went across the town lines.
Right. They were deeded parcels that were partly in both towns. And that's the way the deed read, so...
Right, I remember that.
So separating those pieces solves one issue, but it's not the same as rescinding those prior Form Cs.
Yeah, but I thought that, I thought y'all came in prior to that that combined everything, that combined everything else.
I mean, they may show as being all one lot, but, you know, the...
I'm not aware of that.
You know, we want to have, you know, a plan in the registry as rescinding those other two plans.
Yeah.
So that if anyone, you know, right now, if someone looks at it, they might think that that, one of those, the latest of the two subdivisions is still in effect when it is... And so we're certainly happy to comply with Mr. Bot's request prior to the submission of the definitive.
I'm good. Excuse me. Any further questions?
I'm all set.
Mr. Williams?
Good.
Mr. Deion?
No, I have a question. So that road that they put in, that's just one road that goes right into that property?
I've never been to the property. But, I mean, what you see on the existing conditions plan, that second sheet, that's what's on the ground?
It's more of a driveway, I think, if only.
Probably.
So that's not like the subdivision road that...
No, in order to put the subdivision road in, they have to have engineers come out and go where else I can have a subdivision.
Okay.
There's no roads to it. And even if a road was created under subdivision control, if they erased all that, that road goes from being a road to a driveway.
Well, that's what I was coming to, is it would end up being a driveway, not a subdivision road where it comes off.
Because the subdivision road provides frontage to allow other lots to be created.
I understand that.
So by removing the subdivision, it removes the frontage, and no other lots can be created. If someone comes back in the future and creates another subdivision plan or decides, "We're just going to develop the whole 200 parcels as one use," and that frontage would be on Montello.
All right. I'm all set.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. I didn't hear your question.
I'm not voting or not, or not?
That's correct. Not a special permit.
All right. Looking no further questions? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none. The board will accept the motion in regards to the subdivision, preliminary subdivision slash rescission plan for property located at Montello Street and Green Parkway.
I will make that side motion. Do you accept it?
Right, with the conditions of, yeah.
With the conditions, especially the condition of making sure that mortgages, that there are none in good faith.
As stated by Mr. Bot?
As stated by Mr. Bot, yes. I'm not going to read all those numbers.
Okay.
Public service and do it for you.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mr... Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Gatske. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatske says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing... So, Mr. Chairman, I got a request, at least from one member of the audience. I'm assuming she talked to other people and coordinated this. She just didn't make stuff up, I see. She's very good about not making stuff up. About if the board might take item number three, the preliminary concept prior to item number two, the request by the Whitemores.
Is that acceptable to the Whitemores?
Yes.
Yes. Then that's agreeable to me. The chair will accept the motion to take item three out of order and place it next on the agenda.
I'll make that side motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatske. Discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatske says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. So we will be taking number three out of order.
And that would be a preliminary concept subdivision plan? Hi there. Hi, guys.
Hi, Rob.
I'll wait till you're ready for this one. I kind of sit on here. I can't see that.
It's on the screen.
Oh, there you go.
Is that...
You ready, Mr. Chairman, for him?
Uh, please, I only have the pages up on the board. Is that different, or...
Oh, no, it's the same height, actually. It was, didn't realize we had eight.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
Yeah, the path of the road profile is just below. Yep, so that's the, that's the same visual. So, well, good evening, planning board. Turning, Rob Dambroso with Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of A.D. Makepeace. We've been in front of you a couple times now relative to Bunny's Road. So just to refresh everyone's memory, you know, we've come before you twice now with A&R plans in the interest of carving off a lot or developing a new lot using the existing frontage, being Bunny's Road, so that Mark and Darling Whitemore, who are here in the audience and who'd like to speak afterward, could have a house lot. They currently live on Bunny's Road. They want to relocate and build their dream retirement home. I think this might ring a bell to you. The board was not interested, this board wasn't interested, in approving an A&R on the basis of the condition of Bunny's Road. We have made the case that it's, you know, well-traveled. There's 20-plus residences there. It's been maintained by the DPW for many, many years, et cetera. And this board was not persuaded. So now we're before you, just informally and conceptually, to take your temperature, if you will, relative to road improvement, which I think was the message that we got from this board previously, to see if we can propose, coming before you in the future with a subdivision plan, to improve this road to a degree where it would be suitable, frontage for a new lot. And we would do that through subdivision control. So that's what we'd like to propose to you conceptually tonight and just see what your thoughts are. If we could, I'd like to have, I've got Chief Boyle here from the Fire Department and John Woods, the Director of the DPW. We had the opportunity to meet with them informally a couple weeks ago to kind of discuss this conceptually. I think we might have used the very same visual or something close to it, and explain our rationale for coming forth with this concept and get their feedback from it. So in the interest of letting them get out of here, would it be okay for them to speak briefly about why they think this is advisable and their experience with Bunny's Road?
Absolutely.
Great. If you would, Chief Boyle, please. All right. Thank you for the promotion. It's deputy chief, though. Add a few more areas of responsibility. Jesse Boyle, Assistant Deputy Chief of the Copper Fire Department. I bear the responsibility of code enforcement and fire prevention and making sure that anything that's new for a town as far as streets and neighborhoods is accessible by all public safety. I've been in front of the board a few times in the past for similar projects. I'm also here at the request of Tom Bot, the Planner for the Town of Copper. And when this first came across my desk, we looked at it as an opportunity to see what we would regard as a much-needed improvements to Bunny's Road. Although it's been there since the dawn of time, it's a challenge for us. It's a remote area. There are, I'd say, close to three dozen homes out there. And the road is narrow, and it's winding. And it's susceptible to falling trees every time there seems to be a windstorm out there. We've always, in the Fire Department, identified it as one of our weaker areas as far as trying to be able to get out there in a timely fashion because it is heavily impacted by storms. And one of the biggest things that impacts that is just the roadway width. So to hear that there's a proposal that's being discussed about having some improvements done to the road that would improve our access is certainly something that would be very endearing to the Fire Department. Now, the actual neighborhood section where the homes are now wouldn't be part of this improvement, from what I understand. And we have plans in place on how we'd respond to an emergency down there. But to have the ability, to have that road widened, is really something that I'd like to be able to check off my list of things to do as far as making sure that we can quickly respond to any emergency in this part of town. Be happy to take any questions from the board, if they have any.
No, but thank you. I think we all want to see the road widened. And, you know, a fire truck coming down one way and a car coming down the other way on that road would be an exceptionally difficult circumstance.
It's challenging on a sunny day. And we look at it again when there are storms. And we have repeated storms. That road, that's, I think, 18 feet now, become 16 feet, and then 14 feet, and then 12 feet. And we still have to respond to emergencies regardless of the time of year, just like the post office. And that's really when it would be susceptible to something significant, is when the road is even narrower than on a sunny day.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Please. Absolutely, Andy.
Andy Lyons, Austin O'Neill, civil engineering consultant on the town. Now, to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot. Are you able to give a recommended minimum width at this point? Are you going to wait until you formally get a submission for this stuff?
To your point, Andy, we have not received any formal submissions on this. I would just want to refer to the existing subdivision rules that we have in town for roadway widths. You know, radiuses, as far as the curves in the road, would need to be addressed. So that would be, it's not just the width, it's also the radius of some of the curves that are in there. And I believe in the cutaway section, it does talk about 50-foot right-of-way. And I think 24-foot paved surface with clearance on each side, which would certainly meet our needs and requirements. It's obviously not a major road. I think it would be defined as a secondary road in our subdivision laws and our general zoning bylaws. And that's what I would recommend. Of course, when we have a preliminary set of plans, we can provide further written comments at that point.
Great. So, yeah?
Okay. I'll remain for a few minutes if you have any more questions.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And yeah, maybe Director Wood, if you wouldn't mind giving us your two cents. We appreciate it.
Good evening. John Woods, DPW Director for the town.
Yeah, kind of piggyback what Jesse said. As you guys know, that road's very narrow. I battled a lot of storms up there with tree downs, with trees down. When they go down, 99% of the time, they're taking wires with them. That means that road's shut off. We don't touch trees on wires. We have to wait for Eversaws. Sometimes they take, you know, half an hour, an hour. If there's an emergency down there, it's going to be a disaster. Down there many times, just in hot trucks. People will come the other way and we're doing work. Get a shift off the road, let them go by. I've heard road improvements and some tree removal at no cost to the town. I'm all for that. I just think it's really something the board should really think about and think it'd be a benefit to the town. And I want to hear the residents of Ford also, so...
Excellent. How did you find the drainage on the road?
We've never had an issue down there. Never had an issue. There's not any catch basins on that road, on the copper side. Mostly just runoff sheet, you know, off the sheet surface there. So no issues with drainage down there.
All right.
No comments from Mr. Woods?
Any questions from the boards?
I'll stick around also if anybody thinks of anyone.
Thank you, John. All right. Did you have further?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know if there were any questions. So, yeah, I mean, I have a couple more remarks, I suppose I'd make, and then if, you know, Bill and Thomas, Sarah and Dan with me, if they've got anything to add. I've also got Scott Skolinski from A.D. Makepeace, and then we're going to turn it over to the Whitemores after this. But I guess, you know, in closing, you know, what I would say about this plan is, you know, to a road improvement of this scale in this area is going to require some waivers. So, you know, again, when we ask, I'm not asking for a straw vote, but I guess I would ask for your feedback in terms of, you know, how each member, to the extent you're willing to give us any feedback, is leaning toward this concept, you know, bearing in mind we're going to need a waiver as to length. We're going to want a waiver for sidewalks. We're going to need some other waivers, I think, are typically granted. But, you know, this is not a conventional subdivision. I think what we do have going for us is it's a road improvement. And of course, we've got the safety and public health benefit. This is not a new way that you might see under typical subdivision control. You know, on the other hand, again, just to kind of bring it full circle to where we've come, you know, I'm not, you know, this will change the character of the neighborhood. I think that's apparent. You know, we're going to have a different access, a different aesthetic. You know, and this wasn't our first choice. You know, we're kind of in this position based on where we've been procedurally to date with the board. So again, you know, we're still, and believe me, this is not going to be an expensive project either. So, you know, from the Whitemores' perspective in terms of simplicity, cost, and timeliness, you know, they'd love to just get their lot. But again, unless things have changed, that wasn't something the board seemed willing to do. So, you know, I'd like to get your feedback on if this has legs, you know, given what you've heard from a couple town officials and, you know, bearing in mind that we're going to need some significant waivers, you know, so that we know before we start putting pen to paper, again, this is going to be an expensive project, a lot of engineering. We'd like to just get some feedback. So if we're willing to offer that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
All right. I, myself, personally, would love to see improvements in safety and travel ability on this road. But one of the other problems that we had to deal with was lack of frontage. This is an easement and it's owned entirely, in its entirety, by A.D. Makepeace, and it lacks frontage on a road. And I notice on the screen up there that the road improvements end at the Plymouth line, which creates, again, another choke point there. Are you planning on getting approval through Plymouth for a subdivision road from Bunny's Lane to the Carver Town Line?
Well, to answer the two questions, in terms of frontage, you know, just to be clear, and then, Mr. Bot, correct me if I'm wrong, this would create the frontage. You know, the frontage would be Bunny's Road post-improvement. In terms of what would happen in Plymouth, you know, my client, Makepeace, doesn't own that land. So at this point, you know, we're not proposing improvements to the Plymouth section of Bunny's Road.
Isn't that the property line right there outlining the lot in the dark? I see the town line is white.
Yeah, you've got houses in here, though. These houses are privately-owned residences. So we don't have the latitude, unfortunately, to widen the road, you know...
Well, there's, what, 800, 1,000 feet between the Carver Town Line and the top of Bunny's Lane there? And maybe there's a house or two on either side of the approved subdivision road there? Which begs the question is, where do you get your frontage? You can't just, that road doesn't create frontage. It would as an approved subdivision road. But an approved subdivision road would require a frontage that accesses a proper road, a street road.
Also, what we'd be asking this board for would be to, by approval of the subdivision, bless this, is frontage.
Mr. Bot?
Yeah. Subdivisions are how you create frontage. We just talked about removing that subdivision and the frontage that came with it in the last plan. So a subdivision is the way you create a road. And where that road, that property bounds up to somebody else's property, you don't have, we cannot compel the subdivider to improve some roads in some other place. There's provisions, if it's off of a public way in Carver, that we can require some improvements. But essentially, where that road comes through in Plymouth, we don't have any leverage, nor does the applicant, other than going to all those folks and saying, "Can I get an easement from your front yard to make the road wider in your front yard to get to that?"
Well, that wasn't the question. Um, I can see the approved subdivision road in the Plymouth side, and according to the lot line you own, is that not the lot line?
So this is the town line right here, correct?
Yes.
And that is the property line?
Which borders on the approved subdivision road Bunny's Lane in Plymouth.
So the question is?
Where does your frontage come from? We can't create frontage out of whole cloth. It, for all intents and purposes, what we're looking at is just a dead-end road. If you had frontage or an approved subdivision road from Bunny's Lane out there, then you would have frontage on, in Carver. But currently, there's, there's just a, a dead end. It appears that you're gonna widen a section of road and then just let it fall off. And it appears that that's part of your property.
So, so again, your question is, why aren't we improving this stretch here? I just wanna make sure I understand the question. Is that, that what you're asking?
Right. Do you have an approved subdivision plan for that section of the road through Plymouth?
Or are any, we haven't even put one forth yet. I mean, we would present a preliminary subdivision plan to improve this stretch of the roadway. Again, we don't have, unfortunately, the latitude to make those improvements. We don't, you know, uh, you know, again, these are private residences, not owned by AD Makepeace.
So what, what's the black line, then?
Uh, I think that's a land court plan line. Is that what that is, guys?
Just a, correct, John.
Can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Dan Gagny, Bill and Thomas, private residential. Which, again, these, this is a preliminary plan. These are approximate property lines. That black heavy line is the AD Makepeace line.
Oh, I'm sorry, so this is the, yeah.
Yeah, so the property is in Carver for the majority of it. That small piece is in Plymouth there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're right. So, so yeah, so this is Makepeace land. I'm sorry, the private residence land is not owned, is beyond that black property line, correct? So, again, we're, you know, we're presenting it to you with this being the bound because this is Carver. You know, we can't present a subdivision plan for the town of Plymouth to the Carver Planning Board.
Right, well, I would, I, I will tell you that I'd love to see the road upgraded so it's a safe and passable road so that people and emergency equipment can get in. But it's still gonna require frontage.
So, so I just don't, so, once again, the subdivision is frontage. That's what creates the frontage.
Look, if, if you're building a superhighway.
You're not.
And all you have is, and all you have is a one-lane road to get to it. And you've got a superhighway on one side and a superhighway on the other side, and a one-lane road in the middle, it's worthless.
So you're talking about access, not frontage. Again, you know, this will become frontage if this board endorses a subdivision plan, you know? But I, I think you're making a different point.
But you, but you don't have, you don't have an adequate way.
Well, the way's not adequate. If it were, we would've been able to do formal, a formal lot there for the Whitemores.
Right, but it's still, even after all those improvements, you don't have an adequate way.
Well, it, it will, by definition, be an adequate way.
No, it won't.
Well, how do you egress? And all of a sudden, it's...
That's why we're talking to you. It's up to you guys. If you say it's not, if you tell us that you're not willing to grant us waivers and endorse a subdivision plan, even conceptually, you know, that's why we're here before we put pen to paper and come up with a set of plans. You do have the authority to do it if you're not willing to do it because...
I would argue that you can't take the 24-foot, 50-foot-wide subdivision road and drop it down to a 13, 14-foot road and consider that the way would be adequate for egress or entrance in, into that. It's kind of, you're cutting off an important aspect, and that's the ability to access that, that section and the conditions of the road in regards to that.
And, and again, we acknowledge this isn't a perfect plan. If it were, you know, we probably wouldn't be here. Conceptually, we would just put it on your desk and say, "Hey, we meet all, all the rules and regulations of the subdivision, uh, bylaw in the town of Carver, and we'd expect you to endorse it." We're here because we recognize that this is not a conventional plan. We've got a long way. We're really doing the best we can with what we have to make something that's vastly better. But, you know, we, we acknowledge it's not perfect. That's why we wanted your feedback.
Then why would you stop with the road improvements at the Carver Town Line rather than bringing it to the approved subdivision road?
Would it make a difference if we were to go to Plymouth and ask them to approve, you know, if we were to try road improvement there? I mean, we'd still have an issue, potentially an issue to you, where we'd have this stretch, you know?
That's an approved road through Plymouth. There, there would be no issue with us, but we can't, we can't approve, prove anything in Plymouth. First of all, I'm completely unfamiliar with their bylaws or zoning laws.
I'm not asking you to, yeah, no one to agree, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
It sounds like, um, the answer may be to have this board, uh, potentially approve this plan with the condition that the applicant comes back with an approved preliminary plan from Plymouth to connect the dots, uh, across that 800 or so feet so that this board can be assured that that portion of the road in the neighboring town will also be improved. And then there'll be, there won't be a dead end, uh, on the Carver end at the town line. Is that my understanding with the main?
That's, it is, yeah. Um, I think, well, I'm not sure about the other members, but for me, it is. It's, uh, you're gonna have a nice wide road, easily passable, and then you come down to a little choke point where there's gonna be a lot of problems. And, and accessing street roads, again, is it adequate? And could a fire engine pass a car? Would a car have to back up out of Plymouth, or?
So now, are you referring, just for clarity's sake, to this stretch? Or to this stretch here? I mean, again, I think that it sounds like what I'm hearing, at least from the chairman, is that, you know, you'd look to have this portion similarly improved. But if we got there, would we be on the right path? Or you still have a concern over this portion?
No, no, that, that, that's already been priorly approved by, as a road system, by the town of Plymouth. So it's, it's where, more or less where your prop, the, the subdivision road in Plymouth ends.
From there to Bunny's Road.
To Bunny's, to, yeah, the rest of the easement.
Okay.
And are we talking about bringing this road up to code, subdivision road code?
Well, I mean, that's another question. Your code would create, I think, like Mr. Gaskin noted, kind of a superhighway. I mean, 24 feet in width and, you know, all the specs set forth in, in your subdivision reg would be an impressive stretch of road compared to what's there now. I mean, you know, certainly if you'd let us, uh, do something in between those two, I think that would be the applicant's preference. But again, we'll defer to you, you know, we're here for your feedback.
Well, the thing of, the thing with that is, you're going to be, you're gonna be asking for these, you're gonna be wanting, you, you wanted to do these improvements to the road. Bless you. But you don't wanna bring it all the way up to code, and then you wanna make it a road.
Well, I'm asking you a question, so...
So, but, but what you're, what you're asking for is to put in a not-so-nice road and then turn it over to the town as a road. Because that's, that's ultimately, that's what it, what would end up happening. And you want the town to have to maintain it and, and do the improvements on it afterwards and bring it up to code.
Well, I guess just point of clarification, you know, acceptance is a separate process. So, you know, and, you know, for what it's worth, the town does maintain the road already. We're not talking about necessarily public acceptance. And again, there are other things, it just be, we're not just improving the roadway base. I mean, there would be, you know, tree clearing, drainage improvements, you know, straightening out some kinks, great improvements. I mean, there'd be a whole myriad of improvements to the way beyond just, you know, making it wider.
Right, so if you're going through all that, why not just make it to code?
So again, if that's what this board is telling us, that's some of the feedback that we'd like. If you're telling us, you know, meet the letter of the bylaw, you want 24 feet of pavement, then, you know, that's feedback.
Mr. Bock?
Yeah, just for clarification. So, uh, under subdivision control, in, in creating a roadway, it creates frontage. Uh, they would be building it to the planning board's specs. And that goes to, starting with the dirt that's underneath the pavement. You've gotta make sure there's sufficient soils in there, sufficient subbase. Uh, what's there right now likely has got, uh, has been compacted over the years. But in order to build a road, essentially, they would build, uh, and we sort of talked about this, how would you go about doing that and maintain access to the folks who are there? So you would build a lane next door to it, coming in, grading, compacting, and putting all those things in. Whether the width of the road is the full 24-foot or less, uh, those have implications for stormwater. Uh, the Carver Fire Department prefers a wider road because they get their equipment up and down. And because this is only one way in and one way out, uh, they're likely, I don't wanna speak for the fire department, but they're likely to want as much pavement as they can on there to get a vehicle in there to get their spreaders out and things like that. So, the roadway that would be built would be built to subdivision standards unless the planning board waives some of those. And one of those that they're asking for a waiver on is the length of a dead-end street. But everything else would be built, uh, at least from the discussions we've had to date, uh, per the specs in the subdivision regulations.
But they're not asking for a subdivision?
They are. You cannot build a road, you cannot build a road in Massachusetts outside a subdivision.
Okay, well, that's not what's being presented. They're presenting a concept, and then what's, what's being discussed is a concept and a yes on an A and R, not on a subdivision.
No, we, we came before you, you like our A and R proposal, so this is not an A and R.
So this is a preliminary subdivision?
It, it's a, it's a precursor to submission of a preliminary subdivision plan. What I basically'm saying is, if we were to file, I mean, this is just overlaid on a satellite image. The question is, you know, if you're willing to give us some feedback, would this board view this project favorably in light of the improvements, you know, that were discussed here and the benefits to the town, given the fact that we're gonna need some waivers? Sounds like you're not gonna give us a waiver on width, or aren't inclined to. We hear you on that. You know, the biggest waiver is length. You know, another one, no sidewalks, which I would hope wouldn't be an issue because, again, I can imagine there'd be a lot of pedestrian traffic that would necessitate a sidewalk here. You know, there'd be some other minor ones, but I think length, like Mr. Bock pointed out, is the big one. You know, so again, we're just trying to get the flavor of the board here before we really sharpen our pencils.
What's the proposed width that, that you're, you're looking at?
Well, it sounds like we're gonna come in at 24.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm asked what, what you're proposing. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, here's, here's the road layout underneath, and that shows a 24-foot lane width to 12-foot wide lanes.
Okay.
Same for section BB, the next section.
If I may, Dan, yeah, yeah.
Please, Dan.
With the 24-foot roadway width, what it does is extends our footprint, which means we're gonna be cutting into the slopes more. So, Tom, if you could slide to that section, BB, that means that we're gonna be working into the side slopes and be stripping trees from the roadway to the top of these hills to make that width work, just so everyone understands.
Top of what hills?
So, in this area here, we're letting up against the wetlands. We're gonna be confined here. We can't go any farther that way. We're proposing, we'll likely propose a retaining wall to reduce our footprint. But even with that and our 24-foot roadway width, we're gonna be clearing to the top of these hills to make that work. Be the same where we have other wetlands and walls, because we can't be working in the wetlands, just so everyone understands.
And that's just a product of grading, uh, the roadway? That, where, as you follow this grade this way, you have to follow the graded side braces as well?
Now, currently, what are the, the white lines outside the roadway representing? Yes.
Are the wetland buffers, is that?
Those are approximate buffer zones, yes.
And these are contour lines, of course. And you can see, this is the wetland itself. I think this is the flagged area, so that, that, that heavy white line kind of traces the, uh, footprint of the wetland itself.
So the road level is currently below what the, uh, surrounding topography is?
In some areas.
Yeah, I mean, generally, I think you've got a steep grade on the west side and...
Now, is there a stream running on the north side of that road, or is that a culvert?
No.
Miss Sterns?
Um, Sarah Sterns with Bill and Thomas. Um, so I've been working with Rob and Dan and the, the team, um, to try to develop this conceptual idea to bring to you. And I think that, you know, it's a little bit unique from what we're used to talking about in terms of subdivisions where we're not starting from scratch. We're talking about an upgrade. So it's obviously a constrained area with, with wetlands and steep slopes. So I think really the, one of the points that Rob was putting forth tonight, and this is one of the reasons we wanted to come before you informally, just to kind of get some initial feedback and understand whether or not, you know, AD Makepeace wants to invest the time and effort into moving forward with, at what is, as you know, an extensive process. Um, you know, we, as an engineering firm, will always do our very best to design something to meet the criteria that the regulatory body is looking at. In this case, we have a lot of constraining factors that we wanted to just bring to your attention, to outline, that we may not be able to meet that in every stage of the subdivision rules and regulations.
Sure, it's a challenging road.
It's very challenging. However, you know, the end result could be a, a much greater benefit. Um, but we just wanted to, you know, put this in front of you to say, like, you know, along with the, the widening of the road, the increase in, um, safety and maintenance and, you know, accessibility, also may, we may need to ask for some relief from some of these, from some of the criteria that we've all been through a number of subdivisions together, and we know now very well what all of that is, and it's extensive. Um, so, you know, I think it would just help us to hear from you as a board if, if that's something you're willing to entertain, um, if we come through with an actual preliminary subdivision Form B, um, in the, you know, coming months. Uh, we know that, you know, it, it's beneficial to the town from a number of different perspectives, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of work and it's, it's a big project. So I, I think that, um, this kind of initial step was something that I think was advisable. Um, and, and we're lucky to have Andy Blans here as well. So Andy, I think I'd be interested in, you know, some of your feedback as well, having looked at a lot of subdivisions for the town. Um, you know, just kind of have some feedback from you as well. We, this is a side note related to the wetlands. Mr. Chair, we did, um, also speak with the conservation agent, so he's aware of what some of the challenges are from that perspective. So that would be another process that this would have to go through, um, which, you know, is no small feat either. So there's a lot to consider, um, with this project and working with the Whitemores and working with Makepeace and trying to, you know, get all these factors pulled together for something like this. And again, this is sort of a cartoon drawing, but it gives you the, the flavor of what, what this could be. Um, to Dan's point, you know, that footprint, if we're, if we're meeting that criteria of 24-foot roadway width, pain width, you know, with 50-foot right-of-way, I mean, that's, that's significant. We may talk to the fire department as we get into the design and say, you know, can we live with 22 feet or whatever? You know, something along those lines may need to be part of this discussion. I think we'd just like to, you know, feel confident that the board is at least willing to entertain that level of conversation with this project.
I personally would love to see safety improvements on this road. It's, uh, is, it's not, certainly not safe to travel, um, with oncoming vehicles. And the amount of, uh, housing at the far end of it certainly creates challenges when cars pass. I drove down it today, and clearly cars have to pull off the road in order to pass. And fire engines and EMTs are, uh, are wider than your average car. So, uh, I personally would love to see improvements in, in safety and conditions to this road, yes. I don't know if any of the other board members have questions or feedback. But please, Mr. Bock.
So one of the other things to bring to light, uh, because, uh, in Massachusetts, you have to have a subdivision to build a road. Uh, and because this is a subdivision, it provides frontage for all that property on both sides of Bunny's Lane. And about a 2,000-foot-long road, about 150-foot of frontage minimum for each lot, uh, there could be conceivably 25 more houses on Bunny's Road with the subdivision. But that's, that's what the law is.
Right, so what's the long-term plans on this, on, on the, the property?
I can't say if we have any right now. Mr. Musk, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Scott Skolinski. Um, this process, just for the record, this process started maybe two years ago. We weren't interested in selling the property. It wasn't posted. The Whitemores came to us, stood on the side of the road with the Whitemores, and made a handshake deal to try to help them do this. And I promised them that I wouldn't turn my back on if it got rough. What we're looking for is to be able to help these, these people build their house for their daughter and, and maybe for themselves, all right? It's got to a point where this has been continuous. What I conceptualize this as is sort of a modified A and R plan to do improvements to an existing road without costing us money, selling the property to them. It's almost like we'll sell the property to keep our word and then cost us $300,000 more to keep our word. Well, I'm willing to spend some money to keep our word, but I don't want to have these people suffer for us trying to do a good thing. All of this costs money. All of this is, is, is your time. We're trying to improve a part of that road that is, that is a safety hazard. You know, I know that we are perceived as the big bad wolf all the time, but trust me when I, some people in this room know me. If I give you my word, I keep my word, and I gave them my word. So that's why we're all sitting here, rehashing this over and over.
Again, so...
I don't know.
Okay.
On this, if we could've gone with an A and R plan or a modified A and R plan, who knows, we'd have had nothing. They would've got to build their house. We would've improved the road safety-wise, and you wouldn't have seen us. We have other projects and big things going on that take our lawyer's time, our engineering time. We're not gonna turn our backs on the Whitemores. And that's as simple as it gets, sir.
Again, I have the highest regards for the Whitemores, and, and I would love to grant everything, but we didn't have an avenue to create an A and R or a modified A and R because the property lacked frontage. Now, we're looking to, to look at that, and again, I am all in favor of it, but I wanna make sure that the project's complete and not half-finished as it, as, as what's being proposed here.
With all due respect, half-finished is half-better than it is. And, and, and I served as a, a, an officer on the Capitol during the foulment, a selectman foulment. Now, so I, I deal with a lot of the issues that you deal with. And I know that that empathy has been displaced by public opinion. has been displaced by public opinion. Sometimes, you've got to calculate what's the right thing to do and stand on your convictions, and if you don't do that, then that's up to you, that's your responsibility. Sometimes, you've got to serve the people, and that's what we're trying to do in this case. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just speaking my mind.
Thank you. Mr. Bott.
So, regarding finishing or not finishing something, under subdivision control, if a subdivision is approved, the lots that are created on essentially one lot and two lots on the other side aren't released until the roadwork is done. That's what we do typically with the subdivision. So, they would not be able to convey a lot until the roadway was done, it had been inspected, and the boards, the lots were released by the planning board. So, regarding the timeframe for selling a lot to somebody, well, you can't sell one if it's under subdivision control until the roadway's done. And the roadway is not done until we say it's done based on the inspections and things that we do.
Well, my reference to not completing it was not in regards to them not doing the job, I'm sure they're well-enabled to do the job, but I'm still looking at that section of road between the Carver Town Line and the Bunny's Lane Road there. Please.
Can I speak on that?
Yep.
Can you reach yourself, Mr. Widmore?
Thank you, sir. I'm Widmore, Widmore, I live down there at the end of Bunny's Road. When I enter through here, I find the choke point to start here, not here. Do you find that different?
I found that the widest point I could find on that road was roughly 18 feet, and to be honest, yes. It was roughly around 12, 13 feet. Around the town line, it was 12 or 13 feet in that area, yes.
So, right at the town line is where the choke starts? So, that's where I'm saying it should, that's where we should be starting our improvements. Before that, there is no choke point.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I guess, just speaking to a couple of the points that were brought up, obviously, Fussin' O'Neill hasn't, actually, the first time seeing this plan, as a lot of you this evening as well. I think, I guess I'd recommend that the town have the applicant submit the preliminary plan formally, so that Fussin' O'Neill could do a formal review of it. I'd advise the applicant team to prepare and submit a similar presentation to Plymouth. It seems that one of the sticking points here is that that connecting point isn't, it's not up to the same standards, doesn't look like by this plan, I know it's preliminary, it doesn't have a right-of-way on that Plymouth side, but I think the applicant wouldn't need to request a waiver for a dead-end road if that remaining section in Plymouth was up to local regulation in Plymouth and approved by the neighbor in town as well. Regarding the road cross-section itself and the grading that may be required for that, I think it will be looking at a lot of different design variables where it may make sense to grant a waiver to go down to narrower road, would certainly be deferring to the local jurisdictions, deputy fire chief as well as John Woods, operation maintenance on what they would consider adequate for road width, let's say what we do for any subdivision in any jurisdiction, before we make any recommendations to, you know, road width that defers from the subdivision bylaws, rules, and rights. I think some of the grading could be minimized by granting a waiver for the reduced road width, as well as potentially revising some of the vertical curvature in the existing road, which I think Mr. Gatsi was getting at when he noted the existing road being in a valley. Raising the finish grade of that road could potentially mitigate some of the grading extents you'd need in the shoulders to tie that in. And then, as the applicant's already looking at, potentially utilizing some retaining walls along the shoulder would be beneficial, but that's also something that the town conservation commission would need to weigh in on where those retaining walls are located. There's pros and cons of retaining walls, and then the disturbance that's needed to actually construct and install those retaining walls. So, the permanent disturbance may be mitigated and reduced, but the temporary disturbance during construction could be increased if a retaining wall. Other slope stabilization options could be looked at to get that three-to-one steeper. I wouldn't recommend a stone or riprap stabilization, but potentially a turf reenforcement mat, something that wouldn't biodegrade over time but would stabilize a vegetated slope, could allow them to tighten up that grading extent as well. So, that's just all off the cuff, based on the presentation tonight. I'd like to do a formal review of the application package if the applicant team gets to that point.
Right, and I'm not stuck on it having to be a certain length-wide, as long as it meets the emergency services requirement, and it helps improve the safety of the road there. Thank you, that was very succinct. Any further questions? I'm not adverse, oh, please.
Sorry, just to sort of put a bow on it, just so we can kind of think about next steps, I'm hearing that you'd like us to investigate during a, you know, connecting those two dots by doing a subdivision filing in Plymouth as well, as well as contemplating what we would need for relief for a roadway improvement like this, just because, you know, it's a, it's not a from-scratch subdivision, it's going to be a different type of thing that we're used to doing and that we're used to seeing together. So, I think with our, if we do decide to, you know, proceed with this, we'll be having additional meetings, particularly with fire department and operation maintenance, just as a starting point, as well as conservation commission, just to make sure it's a viable design. I'm sure there will be multiple iterations by the time we get to you, and I'd like to, you know, perhaps go through, Mr. Bott, too, with some preliminary thoughts on waiver requests that we can continue to discuss before we, before or while we file the preliminary plan, just so we're all on the same page if we do decide to take this leap.
Sure, if the fire department feels that they can safely navigate the road with oncoming traffic with an 18-foot road, I'm going to lean towards what they suggest.
And if I may ask, do the rest of the board members agree with that sentiment?
I also think, before I finish, is that we would like to know what the long-term plans are in regards to the properties surrounding this, because you are, we'll be applying for subdivision, and there's an extensive amount of land in that area. I don't know what is buildable looking at this, but it's certainly something that we should have to consider in regards to the development of the roadway. And, Mr. Bott?
Just one of those other things to point out, because Bunny's Lane has an approved subdivision road, it would be longer than the maximum length for a dead-end road, the subdivision regulations basically say any road that comes off of a dead-end road is a dead-end road. So, you can't build a road off of Bunny's Road because, unless there's a second way out. So, essentially, the only development potential they have, in my opinion, are A&R plans off of the roadway. They can't put a T in there and put two more subdivision roads in and create additional lots, because they're beyond the maximum length of a dead-end street, unless they find some other way to get out of the property, so.
And what would be the build-out potential of that length of road?
Like I said, I looked at 150-foot of frontage for RA, about 2,000 foot, I penciled in about 25 houses, you know, looking at wetlands and things like that, so 25 houses-ish.
Okay.
Well, you know, and bear in mind, we'd be giving the lion's share of this easterly portion, we're selling it to the Widmore's, so, you know, maybe soon we would be developing 25 houses, you know, given the current tension.
But as an approved subdivision road, they could come in for A&Rs.
Yes.
But it would be up to the board to waive the length of a dead-end street to make additional roads off of that. So, my back-of-the-envelope calculation, 25-house lots-ish.
Do we have any further questions from the board?
No, thanks to Andy's professionalism regarding this, I feel comfortable with it going ahead.
Now, I will, if you wish, you're welcome to poll the other members of the board, they're not required to answer in any form or fashion.
You know, again, just the more data we can collect at this early stage, the more helpful it is as we put numbers together and pen to paper. We just appreciate any feedback.
We'd love, yeah, we'd love to hear from anyone who's willing to give us their two cents, I mean, it's him, like Mr. Gatsi, he has some reservations about the project, kind of conceptually, but, you know, again, whatever you want to give us, we'd rather hear it now than $50,000 from now, right?
Mr. Williams, you're more than welcome to speak up, because this may be something that you are involved in, in the long term.
Well, as mentioned, this is kind of unique, but not that much where you have a part of one town you can't get to unless you go through another. I know when the Mass Pike came through where I lived, there were all kinds of sections you can't get from Whalen to Natick without going through the other town. And to, you know, what goes on in Plymouth, I don't think we can have anything to do with, and if the road is narrow there, that's not the applicant's issue or problem or ability to change. And as far as, you know, it's a nice, quiet, I rode my bike down it, riding a bike down is a beautiful road, but I'm not driving a fire truck either. You know, and to say it has to be this big, huge road now, well, there goes the trees, there goes the slope, there goes the nice, quiet road. You know, for the improvement, yes, but destruction, how much do you take down to make better? And how much better does it have to be to make it work? You know, there's a lot of back and forth, and it can't be all one side or all the other side, so it's going to have to be give and take, which some people do and some people don't, so. And again, an improvement is an improvement, and if you don't go too far, then it's still better than the way it is. So, it's, you know, I'd be flexible if I had to go as far as, you know, give and take on both sides.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Okay.
No, we appreciate your time and stuff.
Yep. This is a nice segue, so the Widmore's had sent a letter to this board, they, Mark and Darlene wanted to, you know...
Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda.
Are the next item on our agenda.
Explain what the intention is in the letter.
All right, if you're all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a request by the Widmore's to discuss Bunny's Road, please.
So, thank you very much for hearing from us tonight, we do appreciate your time.
I'll just need you to identify yourself again for the record. Thank you, Mr. Widmore.
42 Bunny's Road. Again, I do appreciate everybody here. My letter, if you read states, as he was telling you, we went to them, and I'd like you to read the letter. And in the letter, it also, you know, we went to them, we asked them, we'd love to build a house, and I could show you where, I have an idea of where the house would be, and if you even wanted to go over, you know, again, I don't own the land or I haven't done any engineering work to the land at this point, so I have no plans to come before you on what I'd like to do, I have in my mind on what I'd like to do, and what I'd like to do is not see a lot of houses. I don't want any of the subdivision, I don't want to see my neighbors, okay? I want to, when I read the zoning and bylaws of Carver, and I love Carver, I've been here for a long time, is we're keeping it royal. Like my neighbors now, I like them, I can see them out, and I can even talk to them from my yard. I don't want to do that anymore, and we said, wouldn't it be great if we could live over here, which is over the other side, you know, we're out on the, oh, looking at it, and so we wrote them a letter. That's what I want you guys really to know. They weren't trying to sell the property to us, we went to them, he came down and met with us, we told them what our plans would be great, and then they just said, okay, this is what we'll do. So, it had to go before land court. Two years later, we're here, it came out of there, and to sell it to us, they have to sell it as one parcel, and that's why we're getting that much. So, my plans with that, I don't know quite yet, has to be engineered, I have to see what I can and cannot do. I don't want a lot of houses. I would like to see some maybe long driveways, I'm not interested in putting roads in, but with, when the first meeting we came to, when we talked to you, when you said that Bunny's Road needed improvement, absolutely no argument for me, I've always said that. It wasn't a safe for our emergency services, or even for the DPW and stuff like that. They have been taking care of it, the town's been taking care of it, we've all worked together to make living on Bunny's Road livable to this point. Now, if it needs to get, in order for us to do improvements, I would like to see Bunny's Road get improved for my own, because if I'm going to be building on that side, I want to see safety for all the residents there, but I don't want to see Bunny's Road changed. I wouldn't want to see it become a wide 40 mile an hour road. Like in my letter, I also say to you that I'd want to keep it 25 miles an hour. In order to do that, you know, like now, I think even that some of the people drive too fast on Bunny's Road, when you go by my house. And so, if we even keep it so that the speed limit stays down, and like at the end, we put a stop sign there where that comes, there, there was one day before that one of our neighbors removed, so there's other improvements that need to be done, speed limits need to be posted, stop signs at the end, and all that can be accomplished working together with you guys, with the emergency service, with the DPWs, and I'd be glad to work with the town as far as doing improvements and putting, you know, removing trees, I've got to remove trees anyways, so I could help with that expense, and I want to, you know, as much as I possibly can, but I'm not a big developer. And I submit to you that the choke point starts at that white point, and I would love to, and in my letter, it also invites all you guys to take a ride out there and look at what you think needs to be done, even mark trees that you'd like to see gone, and I'll get them gone. But I want to be able to keep it royal. I don't want to see subdivisions coming in and breaking roads off. Now, what I'm looking for, as far as living in Carver goes, Carver's, just like I say, that great spot to live, you require 150-foot frontage, an acre and a half to, you know, minimum to grade a lot, right? And keep it royal, don't take down a lot of trees. So, I want to take down all the trees that are necessary to take down, but not more than that, you know what I mean? Again, to create safety for the road. And so, to do that, we just need to all work together, and if we work together, then I think everybody benefits, the town benefits, the road benefits, the residents benefit. There'd be a couple more houses being built in, there'll be tax revenue coming in from that, so when the town does take it over, it's not like they're not, they'll be getting tax revenue. I mean, I live on the other end now, on Bunny's Road, and from what I understand, I'm paying, you know, road improvements and all that, regular taxes like everybody else, is what I'm saying. And the town has been doing a great job, we've always, even through troubled times, managed to keep that road open, so that it's, you know, we can get to people if they need help. It's been working out well. So, again, I invite anybody that has any questions on that road, or what needs to be done on that road, to go down and make suggestions. But that's what basically, we came here, what my letter says, is we want to work with you, please let us know what you need, and that's what we want to do.
Now, you, what, if you wouldn't mind, I'm not entirely certain which areas you're looking to acquire and...
This is, this is, would be the side that I'd be purchasing, yeah? This is where you go through, and right here is where the other houses stop, where we all live, is Frank's house, Dave Buca, Bob's, Lady... all live, is Frank's house, Dave Buca, Bob's, lady out here on the end, has a nice property there. And I live on the other, there's another valley in there, and I live on the other side. So through this section of road, choke point, there's a choke point here, another choke point here, gets really wide through here, it's back, so there's sections that are wide enough for two inches to go past each other, and there's sections that are not. That needs to be fixed, it's not safe the way it is. There's no doubt that you were right when you said improvements need to be done before any development. So we just want to know what we can do, the minimum amount, to make it safe and to allow me to build homes on this side. So I would like a house up here, right here, there used to be a trail over there, it's a beautiful spot, but I don't want to develop it, I'd like to save it for future development. And over here, possible, but maybe a couple houses, you know? And if I was to do any more, I certainly would come back and say, hey, and, you know, get your approval. We certainly wouldn't do any work without the planning board approval and all the town building department, plumbing inspectors, electrical and all that. I've built on Bunny's Road already, and that was thirty-five years ago. Frank Mazelli was, was the guy that I talked to at that point. And I was able to, you know, get down Bunny's Road and do all that. And even then, I said, this road needs to get, could use improvement, there's choke points in here that are, it's not safe. So we agree with you, and we want to work with you.
You, you don't have to answer it now, but should this move forward, we would want a more accurate accounting of the development.
So I need to get that engineered, so I know what I can and cannot do. I know that it's a lot of high land that, you know, when they talk about valleys, this is, that's very high land, it goes straight up. Yeah, these lines are all really close together here, so it goes straight up here. But when you come down here, you'd be able to go back up that way. You go down through here, there's an entrance in here, there's another entrance in here that already exists. I had one time, I think it was Conny, come down and look at it, because I wanted to know if that, there was a, there was a drainage thing here that's seen marked out, but it's not a creek, it was a man-made thing. And this used to be a cranberry bog, that's how they drained it. But it wasn't for drainage for the road, it was for that bog. So they just made a connect down to here. When it rains or we get made any storms, it doesn't hold water. It was, again, used for that purpose, but they stopped using that bog a long time ago. As far as I know now, it's, it's just a bernal pool.
Because I had noticed that it was there, and I wasn't sure at what point it fit into the wetlands and development.
It was drainage for that bog originally. Yeah. They did the delineations of the wetlands. I don't know if you noticed that.
I saw the blue flags were out, yes.
Yeah, did you go down there? Yeah, so, yeah.
So just a clarification, so are you buying everything on the north side of Bunny's Road?
Correct. Yep, even the Plymouth section of it. Because to divide that up would mean multiple sales. So.
Well, then I'm going to lower my twenty-five house number, because I assumed that they were buying somewhat a lot and not, they consider part of the acreage.
Yes, which is twenty-six.
So two thousand foot of road, hundred and fifty foot of frontage, let's call it thirteen-ish.
That would be one side of the road.
No, it's not going to happen, thirteen houses, I'm not.
Right, yeah, you were, you were saying.
I don't have control of this, but I'm not, I don't want, it's not what I'm looking for.
All right.
Yeah, it would be a wonderful place. I think, like I say, everybody would, would gain from it, the town would gain from it, Bunny's Road would gain from it, the people at the end of Bunny's Road would then have a better access road. If a fire breaks out or emergency services and ambulance, it really should be so that two people can pass, because, you know, how if something like that does happen and somebody breaks down right at that choke, right at the beginning of the road? Yeah, you're right, we're, what are we going to do? We're going to push that car right into the woods so we can get by, all right? But we don't want to go through that. We want a road that's going to be safe enough to be able to handle people living there. But the thing, the reason I always, I wanted to speak up to you mainly about was, this has all been Sol Darling's fault, she started this. She went. Well. Exactly what happened, so.
Don't make me get between the two of you.
She said, she said, I'm not leaving Bunny's Road. Wouldn't it be nice if we could live right down just above that arrow? And I said, yeah, and it's way up high, it'd be a beautiful spot, and there's no way any piece would sell us a land. And he came down and said, okay, we'll do that, you're responsible for making sure that there's, you know, whatever needs you to get done. And I want to take that responsibility, and I'm willing to take that responsibility, and I want to work with you guys to make this, this happen, and everybody in this room. But I'm not a huge developer, so if this doesn't get approved this way, what could possibly happen? I don't get the property. Our larger development gets the property, who's got a lot more money than me to work with.
No.
You know what I mean?
I won't do this for that.
Well, I'm just saying.
I didn't make a promise to them, I made it to you.
That, yeah, I appreciate that. But, so that's what I wouldn't want to see happen. And I think my neighbors would rather see me put a few houses in there than anything else. We've always had, you know, we don't want Bunny's Road to change, we'd love it, want it to be safer, that's all. So I do appreciate your time, thanks for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Whitemore.
Please give us your feedback so that we can move appropriately.
Questions, comments? Uh, the next order of business for the board is, oh, I'm, what? Oh, it's not you. Oh, no, nope. Recalling my attention. Public hearing continued on the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision, Gibbs Street subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street on assessors map one twenty-seven lot thirty-three and map one twenty-eight lots one, two, three, six dash one and fifteen in Carver, Mass. in a residential agricultural district. Proposed work includes construction of a plus or minus four hundred linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac, stormwater management system, and upgrading to support a three lot conventional subdivision. Each proposed single-family dwelling lot will have its own private well and septic system. All right.
You want to wait, you need it, yeah.
Do we have a representative?
Yes, double header tonight, guys. Hi, for the record, Rob Dambrosio, Dambrosio Law in Plymouth. I am here on behalf of Slocum Gibbs, Slocum Gibbs, excuse me, Cranberry Company, Gary Garretson, the principal, lifelong Carver resident, is here with me, and I've got Bill and Thomas as well. You know, Sarah and Dan, they just spoke at the last hearing. So just to give you guys a brief recap, you know, again, we've, I don't want to give you too much because it's getting late and you know a lot of this, but briefly, back in the spring of 2022, a preliminary subdivision plan was filed, that was back in April, there were two hearings before this board based on that submission, Fussin O'Neill did a peer review, and then Bill and Thomas came back, filed the definitive subdivision plan, which is before you now. We made a presentation to this board in November of 2022. And again, you know, just to recap, we've got approximately four hundred foot roadway and a cul-de-sac with a modest two percent grade, you know, this is a large residential agriculturally zoned parcel of land, about four hundred fifty acres, and as you pointed out when you read the notice, Mr. Shea, it's going to be a three lot subdivision that's allowed by right in this standing district, and we're going to have plenty of area and frontage for each lot. You know, again, I think that really where we are now in terms of the state of play is right before that November twenty-second hearing, we got Fussin O'Neill's initial peer review letter relative to the definitive submission. We certainly didn't have a chance to address it one day later, nor would you have been able to receive our response in a timely fashion, but we did appear before you, answered some questions, subsequently had a site visit that I think all of us attended who were in this room. I think most of you got out of here, at least three of you, and then maybe Kevin, you might have gone today, someone went today.
I went today.
Yeah, okay, so I think most of you, all of you have now seen it, the site, and we filed a response to the Fussin O'Neill comment letter, and that resulted in their final memo dated January sixth, so just a few days ago. And I'm of the opinion that there aren't any major issues here. I guess I'm happy to field questions, but I don't want to belabor anything. I think the memo perhaps speaks for itself, I trust the officials. And I think those are really the only pending items relative to your approval here. But again, happy to answer any questions or give you more information if you'd like, or walk me through the letter as you see fit.
Is the existing driveway going to remain or is it going to be removed?
I think the Gibbs Street is going to basically subsume the existing driveway for the most part.
What's the width of this road?
I think we've got a...
Twenty-four feet?
Twenty-four foot is required in your bylaw, fifty foot right of width.
Twenty-four feet is payable and fifty foot right of width.
Yep. Dan, I believe my question at the prior was, wouldn't it be a lot less expensive, less invasive to apply for a rear lot? You already have the existing buildings there. It wouldn't require a subdivision road that's as invasive and well into the wetlands on, on both ends of it, but would still provide you with whatever required frontage would be necessary?
Well, I don't want to be overly brief, but you know, this is our desired configuration, what we've come up with here. So maybe there were other ways to divide this property, undoubtedly there's unlimited ways that the property could be divided, this is the configuration that Mr. Garretson desires.
And, and again, I'm asking why? Why the more invasive route? Retaining walls in the wetlands, sub summation of the wetlands, bridges over surface water? I'm just curious, I'm asking...
So what's your lot division proposal? I'm, I'm just not, I want to...
I'm asking why you didn't just apply for a rear lot or, as you're not building apparently really new developments and new subdivision houses in here, you're using the existing houses in the rear. The two front properties have more than sufficient frontage, why didn't you just apply for a rear lot as this property's been under the same ownership prior to nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, and you're eligible for it and continue using the same driveway that's, that's currently there?
Yeah, well, I don't know how much you want to get into that, Gary, I mean, this is a superior configuration for the potential future use, I guess, is, I'll just leave it at that, I'm not sure how else to answer it.
Well, what's the potential future use? You're asking for three...
Residential zones, there should be a three residential lots.
And there's, there's currently existing house, existing house, and commercial buildings on, on the third lot. The front two lots have more than sufficient frontage, and the rear lot is eligible for a rear lot exemption from the planning board, and it would be far less invasive than building... How, how tall is this retaining wall that's being built in the wetlands?
Looks like it's about fourteen feet, maybe, thirteen feet at its highest point.
And where are you seeing that on your notation?
I see it's in sheet C five point one, Dan, am I interpreting that correctly? I might be out of school here, trying to interpret the sketch, but that's how I read it.
I'm not, I'm not seeing those numbers in relation to the...
C five point one on the left-hand side.
Get your magnifying glass out.
And there's an elevation table that indicates the height difference between the foot and the top.
So at the end of the roadway, that is approximately a fourteen foot tall wall, correct?
A fourteen foot tall wall, and, and you're planning...
Just to clarify, Chairman, that is not within the wetlands.
It, I, well, I, it's in the hundred foot buffer zone, is it not?
It is within buffer zones, yes, but it is not within the wetlands.
Okay. And you're, you're proposing to put a bridge across the surface water out by the road?
We're proposing to install a culvert at that location, there's no surface water, that's irrigation canal for the cranberry operations.
So that irrigation now would flow underneath the road, to, to be clear?
Because when we went to look at it and it was staked out, it looked like it was separate in its entirety from the existing driveway. It was, looked like, it appeared that it was going to be placed next to the existing driveway, and I, I can't find the existing driveway anywhere on here.
So you know that we have a plan that overweighs the drive, the, the street over the driveway, Gibbs Street over the driveway. But I mean, there is some, there is some overlap there.
So, I mean, portions of the driveway will be, will go away as we regrade the areas that are not within retaining walls. So, Tom, if you could jump to the next sheet, please? The existing driveway, here's where that drainage culvert is, existing ditch, and then here, the existing driveway runs up this way. So we will be regrading in these areas to make that happen, but they're going to maintain access to this, this structure here.
Through the new road or through the priorly existing driveway?
Through the current driveway, correct.
So the, the commercial agricultural buildings will retain the original driveway?
Well, there will be driveway coming off of Gibbs Street to, to access those structures, the portion of the original driveway that's underneath, or is where Gibbs Street will be, will obviously go away. Let me get your Google map here.
The entirety of the original driveway is, will be subsumed or otherwise disposed of?
I don't think it's a perfect overlap. Yeah, there's a...
Here's the existing driveway wraps around, here, you'll have access to this portion over here, it will be regraded in this area, so this area will go away.
So you're putting two curb cuts roughly immediately next to each other? You're not going to get rid of the prior driveway? You're going to leave that for the commercial vehicles and what, open Gibbs Street up for the residential vehicles? I'm trying to figure out what's going on here. Because I see the existing driveway and it's completely separate from the proposed Gibbs Street.
So you're asking how will this structure be accessed?
Is it going to be done through Gibbs Street, and are you removing the old driveway? Or are you leaving the old driveway immediately adjacent to the proposed Gibbs Street?
This driveway here, you're asking?
Yes. That, is that the one? That's, that would be the one we drove up to when we...
Yeah, that's the one that we parked in.
There's no plans for any work beyond installation of this roadway.
So there will be two curb cuts? You got two driveways right next to each other?
Well, we, we have a street, there'll be a street here, right? So we're creating a street.
And, and that's currently agricultural, commercial facility?
Correct.
So you're wanting to create a residential... You're creating residential lots? You're creating a residential subdivision and you're leaving one lot commercial?
Uh, no, sir. This would be a residential lot, residential lot, residential...
So, so you, then you'll, you guys are tearing down the, the commercial office and replacing it with a house?
We haven't committed any development plans yet, I mean, that's going to be on the come, and we're going to have to work with the building department in terms of, you know, what they may require by way of, you know, erecting a structure, demolishing a structure, that's all I can tell you at this point. We're here to establish the street and lot lines.
But why wouldn't you widen the existing driveway again or apply for, the houses are in existence, whether they're non-conforming or not, there's avenues to the zoning bylaws to deal with that. to deal with that. But again, a rear lot would allow the access with the current state, and wouldn't be as invasive with retaining walls and into the protected areas, onto a road that really doesn't appear to serve any purpose?
Well, I think that's subjective in part, and it's also kind of posing a hypothetical that respectfully, don't think we're obligated to respond to. This is, this is our proposal. You know, we feel we've met all the rules and regulations. We've had three rounds now of peer review between the preliminary and definitive, so again, we're happy to field any questions about compliance or shortcomings thereof, but to kind of dabble in a hypothetical as to why we didn't, you know, draw lot lines differently, I just don't see the relevance.
Well, part of what we're supposed to do is limit the disturbances to certain natural resources, including the protected wetlands, and the environment in general, and it doesn't appear that you're going with the least troublesome or invasive development in this regards as a, into this property.
Well, I mean, respectfully, I think if we comply with Town of Carver's subdivision regulation, that's neither here nor there. We've also been through conservation delineating wetlands, so again, you know, this board, you know, you may have developed this land differently if you owned it, but, you know, again, I just don't think that's an issue here.
Well, what is at issue is the road goes into a protected area of, protected area by the Town of Carver, and it has a very big retaining wall in regards to maintaining it, which makes it somewhat more gra, uh, more invasive in regards to that. You're putting two, two accessways next to each other. One of them apparently is going to be used by commercial agricultural vehicles, and the one directly next to it on the, on the curve there is going to be dealing with residential vehicles for houses that are already built. So, what is being, what is being...
I think that if we were to sell, for instance, Lot A, which is the lot to the north of Gibb Street, there's a bunch of there, and to a, to someone who wants to use residential purposes, in all likelihood, there would be a discontinuance of that commercial use. But again, this is really...
Agreed, but Lot A has more than sufficient frontage, as does Lot, the, the lot on the south side of Gibb Street, so...
Right, but we're not required to use A and R to, to configure Mr. Garretson's land. We can, this is state, this is a state statute that we're under. We're coming in under Chapter 41 here.
Right, it seems overly invasive for, for what is already currently existing on the property, and I see no plans to expand that. Are there plans to expand that? Is there, is there a reason that, that this road needs to be that particularly invasive in regards to this?
Is there a need for, I mean, I'm not sure how to answer that. I suppose there's no need to do anything ever. I mean, this is not a necessity. This is, you know, the property owner's pleasure, you know, and, and we've submitted a compliant plan here.
It's, it's, I see substantial issues in regards to development into the wetlands and unnecessary overdevelopment for what should be a, a simple, quick, and easy process.
I mean, bear in mind, we do have to comply, you know, we're not seeking, nor would you be able to grant us a waiver of the Conservation Commission rules and regulations, or the State Wellness Protection Act. We, that's not an issue here. If we were to submit a development proposal that ran afoul of CONCOM requirements, they would deny it. So, again, this may not be, you know, your personal or the board's preference for how this would be cited, for environmental reasons, but, you know, we're not gonna do anything we're not permitted to do.
Well, you're not asking for anything that you're not permitted to do. I'm asking you why this particular plan, when there's other easier, less expensive plans? A subdivision will not cause substantial and irreversible damage to the environment, which could be avoided or ameliorated by an alternative plan. That's, that's the question I'm asking.
So, we've got a 451-acre parcel here. Think about the extent of disturbance relative to the overall project. I mean, it's minimal. This is a 451-foot, 400-foot cul-de-sac street.
And I would argue that your current driveway with a rear lot would still provide you with whatever frontage you needed for Lot 3, and allow 1 and 2 of more than sufficient frontage to do whatever you wanted in regards to that.
So, if your family had owned this land for a hundred-plus years, you may opt not to divide it this way. I understand that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm asking why you're not going with a, a, a less damaging plan? Why an alternative plan that is, that is... Please, Mr. Barret.
So, and this was in my memo earlier about the other subdivision, about the purpose of subdivision control. Chapter 41, 81M, purpose of the law. It is the intent of the subdivision to control law that any subdivision filed plan with the planning board shall receive the approval of such board if such plan conforms to the recommendations of the Board of Health and the reasonable rules and regulations of the planning board pertaining to subdivision of land. And it goes on a bit after that. So, the option is not the board's to tell the applicant what he should do. The state law says if someone brings in a subdivision plan, and it meets your requirements, the planning board shall approve it. And it doesn't, it's words, it says...
Mr. Barret.
...shall receive the approval of the board if the plan conforms to the requirements of the Board of Health and the reasonable regulations of the planning board pertaining to subdivision.
And the reasonable regulations of the, of the board in regard to subdivisions under 6.4.2 are protection of natural resources, including groundwater, or 6.5.1, development does not entail unwarranted hazard to safety or help the future residents, and, and again, under Section 4 of that same one, subdivision will not cause substantially irreversible damage to the environment, which could be avoided or ameliorated by alternative plans.
So, the board could grant waivers for, you know, the, the road, but as we talked about with the fire department, the fire department has some requirements from state law to see. So, essentially, the applicant gets to subdivide their land, that's what the state law says, and the planning board's obliged to approve it unless you have something that says this is a definitive hazard. And I don't think we've seen anything that has said that creating this, you know, simple three-lot subdivision is gonna create some sort of hazard. It goes to the Board of Health to, to talk about the suitability of the soils. It goes to the Conservation Commission about those stream crossings and things like that. What's in the board's purview is what sort of waivers do you want to give? But you don't want to give any waivers. You can say, no, build it without any waivers. But as to whether the applicant, you know, has a right to submit an subdivision plan to the board, they absolutely do. And the state absolutely says the planning board shall approve a plan submitted to the board, so...
It, it doesn't say we have to. It, it, it gives, 7.1 says the planning board is encouraged to the use of low-impact development techniques to minimize eff, uh, effects on the environment and protect its natural resources. And, and we're mixing a, a commercial and a residential on immediately neighboring exitways on, on a road curve, which is identified, what, the site, the sightlines in regards to this are 335 feet, and currently it's maybe 350 feet on that direction? It should raise concerns. It should raise questions, and it, and, and if the board feels, and this is my particular take on the subject, that it's, we're not protecting what we should be protecting, the health, safety, and the natural environment, as well, as well as the various other aspects of the environment, then it would be within the board's power to request an alternative plan in regards to this. An alternative plan's available. We have the right to ask why it wasn't considered.
You do, but they have the right to submit a plan, and the board has an obligation to approve it, if it meets the regulations.
If we feel that it meets the standards, yes, including the directions of the, the master plan as outlined, correct? And, and that'll be for each individual decision person here to decide when it comes to that vote.
So, a perception of some sort of hazard versus a documented hazard aren't the same things. If someone pointed out in the plan in Andy's review that, hey, this is a problem with the site distance, then we ought to mitigate this site distance. But, you know, to speculate that creating...
Speculate that commercial vehicles are gonna be pulling out on that corner?
Speculate that roadway is being created.
Were the site distance rated from the street, or were the site distance rated in regards to possible or probable commercial vehicles pulling out from the driveway next to it and creating a site hazard for the length of the roadway?
Frankly, being out there today, and one of the things I talked to Kevin about, is it would be great if this road lined up with Hammond right across the way as a four-way intersection, but from that driveway entrance, you don't have the line of sight that you have with the, with the relocated roadway. So, moving the roadway to where they moved it at improves the site distance to the, to the south. Did we have a site distance issue with this? Andy, do you, where you get, where you get that information? I saw something about the site trend.
It was listed at 335, and they gave it 350, but that's from the edge of the roadway, and does that take into account various traffic coming in and out of that other property?
So, site distances are calculated, and on your turf right now, from a formula of someone who sits in the car at this point where their stopping line would be and what they can see down the road?
Well, I do know on, on the sidewalk that when I went, I almost went by his property.
Yeah.
And then when I, coming out, I almost got hit coming out. I come right around that corner, you can't see it. So, you know, I mean, if you're gonna put something like that in there and use it as a commercial, I think there is a good potential for an accident happening there.
Well, if I may, I'd respond to you that, you know, to the extent you're concerned about traffic volume, if there were three residential units on this property and no commercial, I think you'd have an awful lot less comings and goings in traffic than you do right now. And again, this is a residential subdivision proposal.
But you don't, right, but you're saying that you don't, you don't know what you're gonna do with the commercial building that's there?
Well, I think we'd have a devil of a time, you know, marketing this as a residential house with two large commercial structures in the backyard, you know? That's, that's not a, not a, you know, not an agreeable kind of harmonious use there. So, again, I think you're confusing, if I may, use with lot division. We're here for lot division.
No, and I understand what you're saying, but also, this, this subdivision road just goes in there, and it's a 14-foot drop off it. So, I mean, it's almost like a useless road, really, going in there.
I didn't follow the 14-foot comment, I...
Didn't you say you're gonna put a 14-foot wall? And so, the road's gonna be here, it's gonna be a 14-feet drop, right?
No, the, we wouldn't be allowed to create a road with that grade. In order to create a...
Well, when I was there, they said the road was gonna go here, and they were gonna have to build it up to keep the...
This road's gonna have a 2% grade. It's gonna be a very modest, almost...
No, no, no.
That there would be a retaining wall.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, here, there will be a retaining wall, because if we didn't have one, then we would have...
And how high is that wall gonna...
At its highest point, it'll be about 14 feet.
Right, so there's nothing gonna be able to enter or exit that.
Well, there's no, nothing, what do you mean, enter or exit? There's a retaining wall here.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. So, the road is kind of like useless, it's just a road going in. The cul-de-sac is useless because it's gonna be a 14-foot drop off it. In order for you doing that, it's just to make another piece of land.
Well, yeah, we're not proposing numerous lots here. Lot C, you know, would, would have a driveway here, so we don't need to come off this...
So, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, like Mr. Chair said, by doing a rear, rear lot would eliminate a whole lot of work that doesn't need to be done there. You know, and you would still get saved benefit out of it.
Doesn't, doesn't Lot A become a non-conforming lot?
Can you scroll up to the...
I, I, it's commercial use. Lot A is non-conforming as it is, but I believe it's...
Yeah, to the left on that one.
In existence, so...
I gotta go get a degree in engineering, I'm just doing... So, the reason that there's the 14-foot wall, again, it's a high wall, but that's so that we balanced the cut and fill through the site, maintained that two-foot, I'm sorry, that 2% grade running from the existing roadway. And if you look at how this, the roadway cul-de-sac itself fits between the houses, it was done that way to provide the setbacks that we need to, to these houses. This cul-de-sac is required for safety access. As we discussed previously tonight, safety access in town is priority, and that's what we're looking to do here.
Safety access for prior, pre-existing houses that are already there, and...
So, we just discussed in the previous discussion, requiring safety requirements on a roadway. These are...
So, currently, is the fire, is it not accessible by emergency equipment?
Well, this certainly isn't any worse. We've got 24-foot-wide paved area with a nice turnaround. This is superior in every respect to what's there now for safety purposes. I don't think you can disagree with that.
Well, I, again, it's kind of balanced out by you putting it right next to a commercial aspect there, that's, that's right next to it.
Right, so, again, I think that, you know, it's hard, I think this board's challenged by the fact that there are existing structures on the lot, you know? We, you know, if this, the future use may bear no resemblance to what is there now. I mean, that, you know, it's, it's neither here nor there, what exists right now. I mean, this is all conceptual, right? Gibb Street isn't there right now. I mean, things are gonna be a lot different, you know, when and if the road gets built and, and houses get sold, and lots get sold, there's gonna be a covenant, I mean, there's gonna be a whole bunch of other things that are gonna occur.
Well, if I, if I'm not mistaken, when we did the sidewalk, that first building there was staying. That's what I understood during the sidewalk, that building behind it would go up on the top. So, when you say the commercial would be gone, not, not, that's not what I was told when I did the sidewalk.
I mean, I just don't, I just still don't grasp what bearing that has on our application. I mean, you know, there's, there's, it's not, it's not a rule or regulation, it's just a neither here nor there. I understand that you guys, you know, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but it's just, frankly, it's just not germane to our application.
Please.
I can speak to the site distance item that came up. The applicant did have another consultant, Ron, who were associates, do a site distance assessment. One of the recommendations that they made was to prepare a plan to identify the amount of regrading and vegetation removal required. The current applicant's plan set does show what the site distances could be from the proposed curb entrance of Gibb Street, but I am recommending a condition that the extent of that tree clearing and grading on Lot A and C be further clarified, just because right now, the, the plan set doesn't specifically show vegetation clearing limits that would be required to get those site distances. I don't know if the applicant's need that, anything else to weigh in on, on that?
No, that, that will be amended that condition.
And then, I guess regarding the board's concern about obstructions from adjacent driveways, whether it was a residential or commercial, at the, my understanding of the subdivision rules and regs, we were strictly looking at site distances from the proposed road and right-of-way to the existing road and right-of-way, and intersections of roads, not individual driveways. But I will opine that, you know, it's possible that a vehicle in an adjacent driveway could obstruct that site distance. But to the town planner's point, I guess that was brought up during one of the sidewalks, I do agree that the location of the proposed curb cut, as opposed to the existing driveway location, provides better site distance to the south of the existing road, and I believe that that outweighs the safety benefit of having that proposed road lined up. And I guess the last memo that we issued dated January 6th, there was two waiver requests as part of that. I would say a minor waiver request, one on the scale of the drawings, but we recommend approval of that waiver based on the information legible on all plan sheets, and another waiver regarding the datum that's used in the survey, which the datum that they're proposing is standard engineering practice at the moment, so we recommend approval of that waiver as well. And other than that, we also included a condition recommending that the clearing limits of the proposed road be stated and marked, and the town has an opportunity to inspect that post-clearing limits before any clearing is conducted. Otherwise, the applicant did address our comments strictly regarding the subdivision rules.
And if I may, just to kind of, you know, at a high level, I do think it's worth pointing out that, you know, since before this board, between the preliminary plan and the definitive plan, I think, four times now in total, including tonight, so, you know, to hear comments, you know, what I would think is, you know, the 11th hour, just about the, I don't want the integrity of the proposal, for lack of a better word, it's, you know, I think it's a bit late to bring that up. I mean, you know, it's your discretion, but, you know, I mean, really, again, I don't think they're particularly relevant, but, you know, they don't any do with subdivision control, the state statute, or your regs. You know, it seems like it's really a preference thing, and again, you know, these could've been brought up when we presented the preliminary subdivision plan. You know, nothing has changed dramatically.
The questions were brought up at the, at the, at our last meeting, at the first meeting on the definitive subdivision plans of why? Why is this going through such an invasive process of this subdivision road when something far less invasive into protected areas could've been proposed and still provided whatever required frontage is necessary for existing structures that are already there?
I mean, it would be analogous to this board if Gary came in and said, you know, I want an A&R lot here, and this board said, well, you're gonna have to cut an awful lot of trees to do that, and we don't think that's what you should be doing.
I don't think that's analogous at all. First of all, your problem would be that there's a culvert there, and second of all, an A&R lot is based strictly on frontage and lot size and accessibility, so.
And there's a very stringent set of criteria for what constitutes proper subdivision of land. It's a creature of statute. Again, it's not a subjective decision, really, just like an A&R isn't. You know, I mean, again, I don't wanna diminish the board's role, but you don't really have that much discretion in terms of what you approve if we meet the regs, which, I mean, again, I think, you know, we've got a polished team here, you've got a good peer review consultant and a good town planner, and, again, I think there's just a personal bias against this project is what I seem to be hearing here.
That's a ridiculous accusation. Please, Rob, I think I've handled everything with the, in all of my dealings in a neutral aspect.
I mean, if I was against Mr. Garrison, I just against the project.
No, it's not against the project, it's the simple question. Why isn't a less invasive alternative being looked at in regards to this?
I mean, less invasive would be nothing is what you're saying. You'd rather that we didn't put a single bit of paving down.
That's not true. Actually, if you applied for a rear lot, you could, you could use the existing driveway and roadway there, you could widen it out if necessary, but the houses are already there, the structures are already there. It seems that you're going-
I mean, I think, like, for one, you just heard that, you know, this egress egress from Wareham Street is safer than the existing one, right? So, you know, that is a principal difference, you know, for starters there. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not what's there. This is something different, you know, and it's superior in the applicant's opinion, and, you know, he's paid a lot of money to bring it to this point. You know, it's really, it's his preference, it's his land. I'm not sure what else to say about it, except that, you know, he's got a right to do this as long as he complies.
And we have a right to ask about the alternatives.
Right, and I've done my best to answer you, which is, that's just not what the applicant wants to do. You know, he doesn't have to choose, you know, something that is less quote-unquote invasive. That's just, you know, that's just not the case.
Please, this is, if you're, if you're-
Go ahead, yeah.
This is, it is a public hearing, so please come up and identify yourself. You don't have to sit in our face, but-
My name's Patty Tooney. I'm from Carver. I've lived here my whole life. I'm starting to get involved more and more in the town stuff. So, this is why I wasn't here before, this is the first time I've kinda learned about this. So I wrote something that just says, "I ask you, the board, to reject the subdivision plan because it is incomplete," as you guys are kinda saying. "The information is not accurate because the maps do not show all the earth removal, and they do not explain the impact of this on the water, the storm, water, drainage, and other topics. The Earth Removal Committee has not responded to a request for an investigation of illegal earth removal by Solcom and Gibbs. Google Earth maps clearly show that this company is involved in earth removal in this area. The overall site is 451 acres. There are many spots within the overall area that have been clear-cut and strip-mined. One area is next to the house where they want to put the subdivision. The company Solcom and Gibbs never had an earth removal permit for this earth removal. They violated the earth removal bylaw. Over the years, Solcom and Gibbs has removed as much as 700,000 cubic yards, according to maps, from two sites in Carver without permits. This is worth about $7 million. The company has never paid any earth removal fees. This was put in a demand letter to the Earth Removal Committee in September 2022. They've never responded. The earth removal and cutting down the trees takes away the protection for our drinking water. The owner of Solcom and Gibbs is John Garrison. He is a cranberry business, he is in the cranberry business. He was the chair of the Carver Earth Removal Committee for over 30 years. He was responsible for all the earth removal permits that are causing so much damage right now. The Von Johnson bog on Meadow Street and Fuller Street-
I gotta interject, this is a character attack, it has no relevance.
Right, you can't-
This is highly inappropriate, Mr. Chair.
You can't make-
This has nothing to do with this subdivision. You can't impugn my client, Gary Garrison, you know, over these unsupervised allegations that have nothing to do with this client.
unsupported allegations, I will agree.
Just totally inappropriate.
You have to stick-
This is not the forum for that, okay? You can take out time on PAC TV and if you wanna try to smear his character, but this is not the place for that.
Okay, I have this, thank you. So, you're welcome to give your reasons why you don't agree with it, but you're not welcome to attack a Mr. Solcom or Gibbs in any, any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Okay, so there is other stuff that he's involved with, like I said-
Well, again, we can't go there.
Okay.
We're sticking strictly to comments in regards to what you can see on the board there, and that's where we're gonna keep it.
So, like you said, what is he gonna do with it? Why is he have to do it like how he wants to? It's, you know, clear-cut and stuff, and there's other ways, you know, what's the end result of this?
Thank you.
I mean, again, this is not a lot of site disturbance, guys. We've got 451 acres. I mean, I don't know what the total paved area is here, less than acre, Dan? I mean, what are we looking at here?
I would say less than acre.
I mean, just, again, to hang your hat on the irreversible environmental harm this project is, I mean, it's, it's just, it's de minimis, it really is. I just, I just don't, I just don't understand where a lot of this opposition is coming from. It's really, you know-
Well, I see in the general comments, are there any prior approvals and conditions regarding the subject property from the Earth Removal Committee? And you've already responded that, no, there wasn't, but in here, the applicant response is, is no response required. Which I take it to mean that you guys said there are no prior approvals and conditions regarding the subject property from earth removal. You said no last time. That's, that's correct, right?
That's what you have in, that's what you have in writing, correct?
No, no.
Yes, what you have is correct, as stated.
Okay. Cause your response says no response required, which it should've been a yes or a no. But in our prior meeting, you said that there are no prior approvals and conditions regarding the subject property from the Earth Removal Committee. So, I just wanna make sure-
Mr. Chairman, if I may add-
Yes.
I don't have that previous memo in front of me, but I believe the way Boson O'Neil wrote that was recommending that the town planner verify with the Earth Removal Committee whether or not there was any previous approvals or not, so that would-
Right.
It was the town that was doing the verification, not the-
And I requested it, I requested an answer to it, and the answer was that there is none. So, that's, that's where we're standing with this, because that is the response that we Any further public comments, questions? Please, Mr. Bott.
I have a public comment that was emailed. This is from the coordinator, which is Meg Sheehan of Pine Barren. A lot of the things that Ms. Tooney was reading was in her email as well. The principal question from Ms. Sheehan was about the earth removal to the rear of the property. So, I'm just gonna bring up the Google map for just a second. So, this area to the back here, which is not within the area of work of the subdivision. So her question was, "The Solcom-Gibbs preliminary subdivision plan does not show the existing The existing, the Solcom-Gibbs preliminary subdivision plan does not show the existing topography. They don't show the hills have been leveled by earth removal operations throughout the site in Lots A and Road B and the preliminary plans. Does that make the application incomplete under subdivision rules and regulations? Is it fair to show accurate topography? In my opinion, no, it does not, because the topography is based upon what is shown in the plans. Furthermore, when we look at the subdivision regulations for topographic and grading plans, the question is asked, "Topographic and grading plans shall encompass the entire subdivision and may, that may be affected by changes in surface runoff resulting from the proposed subdivision." In order to, and then it goes to F, "In order to assess the effect of clearing and changes in elevation on existing drainage patterns, the topographic plan will include proposed maximum areas of clearing associated with the construction of roads, utilities, and drainage." So, the area that we've been talking about that's affected by the drainage is this area of the subdivision. We've talked about how it's a hill and it goes up, so everything that, I don't know why it keeps trying to print something from my laptop, it's kinda annoying. So, the area slopes down from here down. All the stormwater is captured within the stormwater infrastructure, as Andy has reviewed. So, the question about, should some clearing in the back part of this property affect any of the things that the subdivision process is doing or the planning board is reviewing? In my opinion, no, it doesn't, because it basically says, "In order to affect, in order to assess the effect of clearing and change in elevation on existing drainage patterns." None of this stuff is gonna affect any existing drainage patterns going off in a different direction, they're all gonna come down, they'll just be Gibb Street and Wareham Street, and the system's designed to capture that stormwater and treat it prior to infiltration, correct? Yes. So, I just wanted to point that, because she asked me to re-comment this to the planning board.
So, is that earth removal? Is an earth removal operation going on behind?
No.
Okay.
Earth removal for a cranberry-
Can you identify-
It's-
My name is John Garrison, I'm the owner of the property. My family's owned the property for over 100 years. That pit at software Wareham Street down the road a little ways, has been operated since 1919, when we used that sand on our own bogs, for which we do not need an earth removal.
No, that's agricultural, yes.
I have 200 acres of cranberry bog, and we're allowed by virtue of owning the property to be able to put sand and move it out of there onto our property. The excavation that's there would not sell $1 of sand out of that, and we had mined the sand there for, let's see, for probably pretty near 100 years, and in doing all of that. So, it's an essential part of growing cranberries, and if we do not, that we need to rebuild the 28 acres of bog that's in front on the other side of Wareham Street, that's over there. This is a stock gap, because as we're running into more and more inhibitions to cranberry growing, I need to decide if I need to develop this property. That road that is there, I've driven for the last 50 years coming out of Hammond Street, and as everything has been sited, going across the road, I moved it down, incurring the additional cost of putting in a retaining wall, because I don't want somebody to be killed coming out of the road as they come cars 50 miles an hour around the corner. It's sensible what we had done, it's not insensible. That ditch was hand-dug years ago, and as drainage for the bog that is there, we pump water up that ditch. It's dry as a bone during the summer. I was told, my father used to chase me in the 40s when I would escape from the house that I'm living in now, and chase me through the tunnel that goes under the road up there. So, we, as we wound up doing this, it's with reluctance that I want to put forth a plan, but to me, this is an insurance policy, because it's entirely possible that the cranberry business, because of the lack of understanding of people like Meg Sheehan and others-
Again, again, thank you.
-that we wind up needing to move material to be able to continue to just maintain the acreage we have. We haven't added any more acreage, we've only renovated the material that we wind up having now and the bogs that we have. So, if I'm to continue doing that, I'm gonna be taking out hundreds of thousands of yards of material from that sandhill that's behind. That's going to be going down even more in the future, so that I can maintain my cranberry farm. If the community decides that they would just assume not, I have in my pocket the ability to do a development and make three magnificent homes to be here, and do something like that in the future. This is insurance for the future of my company and my business. So, that's it, plain and simple, that I'm being driven to spend the money on doing something like this, to protect my business, because my agriculture line is getting to be more and more, I'm not a commercial guy. We don't sell sand out of our pit down there or anything in our area. We are a cranberry guy that does this, so that's how we wind up making our businesses existed for longer than all of us have been around in here. So, as we wind up doing that, the iron mine that was out in front of the property on Wareham Street, that was dug for bog iron by a Mr. Murdock back in the late 1700s and 1800s, that went to, it was excavated and there was an excavation, they took out the iron ore and brought it to shallow furnace. Cranberry vines, this novel get wetland plant grew in there. My grandfather spotted the property at the turn of the century, he bought it in 1919 because it wasn't worth a whole hell of a lot, and made it into the property that it is now. We have some of the best property in the cranberry business now. But, as we're meeting challenges from everything that's around, it's becoming more and more difficult. This is insurance for what I need to be doing so that I can continue to exist as a business. If I wanted to tooth the expedient monetary thing- If I wanted to tooth the expedient monetary thing, I'd be in here going all the way down Wareham Street to the right-hand side. We go all the way down the Wareham Line and talking about putting in 40B apartments or something. That's not where we're coming from. So that's the long and the short. Answer to the road movement, that's it. Answer to the sand movement, that's it. And why it's there. The retaining walls and everything else, this is the least disturbance with having the most safety. It'd take your life in your hands entering next team the driveway that's there right now. And I don't picture that the other cranberry buildings would be there, because the business would be gone and the other things would need to be taken away. And the cranberry business wouldn't exist if I wound up developing this area that's here. I hope that answers.
I think it helps me out quite a bit. Thank you very much. Right. Any further questions from the board?
On this subdivision road, it shows the sidewalks, the hydrants, and doesn't show that you're going to have a fence up there? Because you're going to come, it's going to be a 14-foot drop, right?
You'll see the, I should see.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't see anything like a fence there or anything.
There's, you know, it comes up. I actually think that you're looking at a prior version.
All right. Then I'll stop looking at it.
I'll just bring this one up to make it simple.
You should actually have what a guardrail and a fence, correct?
So we do note that retaining wall with guyrail and chain of fence is difficult?
I don't, okay.
And then that is in the details for the walls.
Okay, so that's what I was looking here, and I didn't see any of that there. That was a concern.
Yeah.
Mr. Glanz, you satisfied with the retaining walls in regards?
Andy Glanz, Fosn O'Neill, engineering consultant on behalf of the town. The retaining walls of this height would need to be reviewed and approved by the building official. I need a building permit for them. But at the moment, there isn't anything strictly in the subdivision rules and regs that includes the applicant from proposing retaining wall of this height. And to Mr. Dion's point, they are proposing safety fence across the top of the wall. Again, how that fence and the wall interact would be something that the building official would need to review. And if the building official needed Fosn O'Neill to weigh in on that, that certainly is something we could help out with during that stage.
And do we know what the materials used for the retaining wall are going to be, or?
Not the specific material, but they are proposing a modular block wall. I guess their detail does say ready rock, but it's not uncommon for a developer to change the manufacturer of the modular block that they use, so.
It's not going to be cinder block or?
No. No, I guess if the board had concerns about the aesthetics of that, you know, I think it would be within your power to add some conditions on, I guess, the material that that is made out of, if you wanted it to be a modular block wall as opposed to a cast-in-place concrete wall. But that's something the board would have to discuss with the applicant team. Currently, Fosn O'Neill doesn't have concern with a working foot modular block wall as currently detailed.
Okay.
And what's the, real quick, the distance from the retaining wall to the wetlands? And do we have, that's within the 65, right?
About 25 feet.
So you would need, what length?
Do we have recommendations from the conservation commission in regards to this?
I do not.
Yeah, just for point of information, your subdivision regs require that we delineate wetlands. That's really the extent of the, that's the extent to which your regs speak on conservation issues. When came time for construction, we'd have to address any and all conservation issues at that time.
Well, we get, we should, we're supposed to have recommendations from both CONCOM and the Board of Health in regards to this subdivision, a definitive subdivision plan. It should have been, or has it been?
I'll hit Gary up and ask him about it. But essentially, most of the regulations say there's a 45-day window to people to respond, and if they don't, they assume we have no response.
Right, right.
But we always go back and ask folks for this.
I just wanted to make sure that they've had.
Yeah, I'll check with.
The requisite time.
I'll check with conservation in the buildings, our new interim building commissioner about the retaining wall.
Mr. Chair, so can I just ask, as far as the culvert is concerned, who determines that it is stable enough for the fire department to be able to bring their apparatus in?
That would be the building department's approval of, if I'm not mistaken, but.
Yeah.
I mean, this road will be, the fire department will be using it if they have to, right, for an emergency? So it's, obviously, my only thing is where it's a handmade ditch, is it going to be? What's going to determine the stabilization of that?
So on, I guess I can let the applicant email.
Sarah Sterns, Philson Thomas, I was just going to comment that Carver Fire did review the plans and the application in detail and have given us a sign-off letter.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, the culvert is proposing standard pipe culverts.
Right.
For a committed wire. So it's similar to being a drainage pipe.
Okay. So it would go to Jesse, and Jesse would determine whether they could handle the apparatus?
And here's an email from Jesse that says they're satisfied.
And if I may, on Fosn O'Neill's end, we reviewed the proposed pipe material, HDP pipe, and the cover requirements for that pipe to achieve vehicular loading as proposed, and we didn't have any concerns with the cover that's proposed over that proposed 36-inch HDP culvert.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, just to respond to your question about the conservation review, we did provide copies to the permitting department at the town filing for all boards to have an opportunity to review.
What was the date of your filing?
I have to look back. I don't know.
When we filed the definitive plans?
Yeah, do you have that under here? Yeah, in the fall, early fall, October 18.
All right.
I'm pretty sure we had a conservation agent about that time, right?
Oh, yeah.
This is the transition when Brooklyn was leaving and Gary was coming.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, I'll check with Gary on the wetland issues and conservation departments, as well as our zoning commissioner and our retaining.
And I expect that, should the board approve it, a condition that it be natural-looking stone that's visible from the road and not like a poured concrete?
I think that retaining wall faces the bogs. It doesn't have a public.
No, it faces, cutting down Wareham Street.
Yeah, you'll be able to see, you'll be able to.
The one at the back?
The one at the back.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Questions, comments?
What's up?
Aside from just checking with the conservation commission in regards to development within the 65-foot prohibited zone, I.
So we're going to continue this for three weeks?
I think two weeks. He said plenty of time.
Yeah.
So if that's all right.
Two things tomorrow. So we will continue this with a motion by the board for two weeks. And I think that I'm also drawing draft decisions, but I want to have an idea what those conditions might be coming out of that.
Should we push it? Yeah, Mr. Bott, this is probably the only week in 2023 that I'm not available two weeks hence, so I don't know if it's possible to push it out.
God bless you, because I was figuring out how I was going to get all this done. Well, I'm going to be gone. Here, my mom's estate in Florida for a week.
Oh, good. If we could push it out to the next hearing after two weeks, that would be.
Yeah, if you send me a letter request and an extension to make sure we're not buttoning up against any procedural guidelines, that'd be great.
And just to be clear, before I tell you that, so you're talking about a hearing on Valentine's Day, I'm thinking. 24th, is that, 24th of what you were proposing?
Graciously, but over my head, yes, I was. But so the first meeting in February is February 14.
Okay, gotcha.
No chocolates, no flowers. I'm allergic to books. So February 14?
Yes, but I would like to limit that particular evening to just the necessities. I know there's, may other be potential conceptual ideas coming forth, and that those should be limited to a night other than that, or you might never see me again.
Okay.
All right. The chair will accept an application, a motion to continue the application of Shulcom Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to carve a subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street until the date of February 14, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
I'll make that said motion?
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Planning director notes, Mr. Bott?
I have notes.
I know we're not going to be discussing zoning bylaw changes on the 14th, but we are going to have to set some time aside for proposed town meeting article warrants.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that, probably opening those hearings on February 28. We've got 65 days from the date that are submitted from the select board to the planning board.
Okay.
So we've got to get those applications done and some drafts as well. So I spent most of my last two days working on draft bylaws and working on tweaks to those sort of things.
Okay.
But so we anticipate that February 28 is the opening of those hearings.
The opening?
There's a number of things on the warrant.
February 28, I will not be here.
Well, when we have our hearings, it shouldn't be during a planning board session.
Well, the good news is it's a hearing for zoning bylaws, so there's no mulligan gig. The mulligan gig is only if this is subdivision or special permit.
No, I'm just being fair by giving you a heads up that I will not be in the state February 28.
Always like to know that, so we don't send a car out to the house to make sure you're okay.
Thank you.
And personally, I would like to hold public hearings in regards to this on a night that's, we can dedicate specifically to the proposed changes and not necessarily kind of squeeze them in on a planning board meeting night. So I would request that the board consider adding a night for the hearings alone.
All right, so March 7?
That would be fine with me, and if it's acceptable to the board.
I won't be back until the 10th.
Well, I don't think we're going to do them all in one night. I think that starting on the 7th, because I anticipate it's going to be a couple, few nights of hearings.
Okay.
Because as I said, we've got, Solar, we got, Batteru, we got, the zoning map changes, complete, you know, there's, even simple things take a while.
Excellent.
It's going to be a couple nights of hearings. But yeah, starting on the 7th would be great. Because I'm pretty sure my math that I did says we have to open them by the 10th. Open them by the 10th.
Remember, there's, now, are we still doing the solar committee stuff?
Yeah, we've got a meeting tomorrow night.
On the off night, or just an off night?
What we talked about is doing them, so we didn't, we had time to do this.
Right, revel.
In those.
Yeah, I remember that. I just try to remember what days and.
So right now, we're looking at, we've got a meeting posted for tomorrow night. And then we have another meeting tentatively for two weeks after that, so we've got a meeting in January. So the 11th for solar bylaw committee and likely the 25th as well. And likely into February as well.
Just trying to balance that with some of the vacation I have planned.
Well, vacation's important.
It is. All right. Further discussion, I think we send our best wishes as a whole out to Ms. Sordillo, who couldn't be with us tonight. Hope for speedy recovery. And then the next order of business, unless further discussion or comments?
Five minutes.
That's what we're going to. Approval of the meeting minutes for 12, 13, 20, 22? Did we, we had a meeting after that, didn't we, the 20th?
We had a meeting on the 20th.
Yes, okay. So I just wanted to make sure I got them right in my head. Everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
So Michelle always often remind you that she emails minutes copies to you. There are now two people who get paper copies, Rich and Kevin. As Kevin pointed out, he's not a giant email dude either. So you have hard copies to the two fellows, just as you got.
So the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 12, 13, 20, 22?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Colonel Shea says aye for approval. Did everybody have a chance to read the executive session meeting minutes? That's not quite as necessary to do tonight, but.
No. I did not.
So we will put those off till the next meeting.
So 12, 13 are approved.
And the board will accept a motion for adjournment if there's no further business.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Mr. Gatsky. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening, and have a great night.